Chairman Morrison. Vice Chair Malick is absent. Commissioner Rosales indicated he would not be able to attend tonight. Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony.
Present.
Commissioner Dodd's indicated he cannot be present tonight. And Commissioner Ogden. Let the record show that four members of the planning commission are present. We do have a quorum.
Chair Morrison, we do not this evening.
If I get a motion to approve the minutes of April 22nd meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 22nd.
And I would second.
Let the record show that the motion passes 3O with Commissioner Ogden abstaining.
Thank you. So I see there's nothing on the consent calendar. There is no item on the tractification item. We have nothing on the public hearings adopted today. Nothing on appeal, post-it type determination. So we'll go right into the discussion items tonight. It's the CIP budget, general plan, and staff. Victor Velasco presenting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Victor Velasco. I'm with Development Services Department. I'm the principal civil engineer there. And I'm here tonight to present to you the City of Oceanside Capital Improvement Program, proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. So I will provide an overview of the proposed program. As you guys are probably aware, the city CIP program is funded through various programs or funds such as Transnet, Thoroughfare, Thoroughfares and Signals, Citywide Drainage, SB1 Parks, municipal buildings, water sewer, harbor, miscellaneous city grants, and Measure X. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 is about $192 million. I do want to point out on the next slide, which provides a pie chart, that the water and sewer accounts for about $80 million of that budget of 192. Another interesting thing from that chart is the $28 million that Measure X brings. So it is a big, big portion of our budget. So most of these years, projects are carry-forward projects. This means that it's projects that are already in process. Or they're also projects of annual nature, such as our ADA infill projects, our annual storm drain projects, kind of maintenance projects that the city needs in order to serve the community. Whereas the new and future projects will be noted on separate slides, as well as a list of unfunded projects. One of our funds is the Developer Impact Fees, mostly known as the DIF. This comprises three, four funds, actually. It's the Thoroughfare, Signals, Citywide Drainage, Art Fees, Public Facilities. And the DIF is supposed to, or comprises about 30% of the total revenue needed for new projects, which means that if, since it's a developer impact fee, it means that if development goes down, our developer impact fees go down, which means that more of the money has to come from the general fund. Currently, we're on a downward trend that began two years, a year ago. And it's expected to stay low for the next two years. It's supposed to pick up a little bit, or projected to pick up for fiscal year 2728. Another thing that impacts this is the SB 330, which allows developers to pay the fee and lock in at the current rates today. So which means that if the, our impact fees go up, developers are already locked in at the current rate. And they can, we can only increase by the CPA, by the consumer price index. So if our, for example, if our rate is $100, and we increase the rates to 130, but the developer locked in at $100 and the CPI only went 3%, we can only charge 103. So that's, that's a big one, the SB 330. One of our funds is the Transnet, which is a sales tax revenue that is retained by Sandac. Some of the big projects to note there are the Coast Highway corridor design and the Pier View project. This account also funds our Slurry Seal and Overlay project. It is one of three accounts that fund the pavement management program. And we will talk more about that in the upcoming slides. One of our other funds is the SB1 gas tax. This one is another one that funds the Slurry Seal and Overlay project. It also funds storm drain improvements. One of the new projects there is the Olive Guard Rail over by Emerald and Olive. If you guys are familiar with the area, there's been a couple of accidents where cars have driven into the backyards of some of the properties there. So the project proposes to install a guard rail in that area. So now to our big one, the pavement management program. I think that's the one that everybody's interested in. What we do when we put together projects for this, for this project, we combine various funds, SB1, Transnet, and Measure X. If you look at the table up there on the screen on your right, we have about 5.9 million for Slurry Seal and about 4.4 or 4.5 million for overlay projects from Transnet and SB1. However, Measure X brings an additional 1.3 million for Slurry Seal and 2.8 million for overlay. So what's Slurry Seal? Slurry Seal is more of a maintenance activities that we do. It's kind of like when the road conditions are good, it allows the treatment to basically extend the life of the road in that current area. We also use those funds for pothole repairs. Sometimes we share with our public works team and they go out and we get a lot of complaints from, from certain area that there's pots or as we're driving around, we see that there's certain areas where there's a lot of potholes. Sometimes we share the money with public works and they go out there and do some of the smaller repairs. But if it's a bigger project that's combined with the annual Slurry Seal and Overlay project, now an overlay project is more an in-depth repair. It's when the asphalt has gone beyond its condition and sometimes you need to grind the top part of the asphalt and provide a more complete repair. Or sometimes even the base of the asphalt has gone beyond repair and we have to do what's sometimes called a whole dev reclamation. So it's more of a repair. Something interesting to note is the, that about, in 2018, it would take about $7 million to maintain our, our current PCI, our Pavement Condition Index, which is based out of a hundred. Basically, the Pavement Condition Index tells you how good a road is. So to maintain the, the Pavement Condition Index, it would take $7 million and about $10 million to increase it. That was back in 2018. Now in today's days, dollars, 2024, it takes about $10 million to maintain that Pavement Condition Index and about $14 million to increase that, that index. So when you look at the total fund that we have there, it's 14 million. That's with Measure X. Without Measure X, we can basically just maintain that Pavement Condition Index. What Measure X has allowed us to do is to try to, try to increase it. And it's been necessary, especially the last couple of years with so many rains, events that we've had. It's, it was just good to have some Measure X money in there. One of our other accounts that we have is the Citywide Drainage Account. One of the big projects that that account funds is the Cleveland Storm Drain. That one, we have, design is complete and we're working with some of the agencies for permitting, such as Coastal Commission. So that's been a little bit challenging, but we're getting there and it's, it's coming along. As you can see, the, the cost of, the funding for that is 1.8 million dollars. Our source numbers are in thousands up there. Another one of our funds is Parks, Parks Fees. Some of the projects to note there is El Corazon Park Site 1. This is one of two or three fundings that El Corazon Park Site 1 has. There's also money in Measure X and in public facilities for this effort. One of our other projects that it's worthy of mention up there, it's the Ron Ortega Restrooms and Field Improvement Study, as that is a new project for this fiscal year. It would look at the restrooms in that park. We currently have a project for the dog park at that location. So this is separated. It will actually look at some of the restroom conditions and go from there. The Harbor Projects, the Harbor Projects are basically, it's a very big picture. It's basically the money's going to be used to replace a lot of the dogs. You know, with the marine environment, they suffer a lot of wear and tear. And there's a need to replace this quite often. So those are some of the projects that you see there, or the majority of them. The municipal buildings and community facility projects, one of the projects that is there, it's the Winnebago Autobahn. If you recall, last year, it was added at the last minute on the budget workshop with council. We are almost completed with the study and we are now moving towards the construction. It's basically going to be installing a crosswalk, there's striping, there's the rapid flashing beacons to be installed somewhere at that area by Eaton down at Coast Highway. So that's one of the projects there. And one of the other things that it's funded through this account, it's all of our software that we use in the city. You can imagine, we use various kinds of softwares to get our work done. And so our miscellaneous city capital projects, one of the things to notice there is the projects, is the sand replacement project. We know the conditions out there at the beach, there's always a need for more sand. So this is funded through, partly through here, which $600 and $2,000 coming from there. And another project there, the one that I want to mention is El Corazon Park Site 1. This funds another part of the El Corazon Park Site 1. So that's a big project. It's currently in design. So we're moving forward with that project and we're, we're starting to get some of the money together because what that allows us is to go after grants and show that the city is really interested and that we have part of the money already set aside for construction. As I just mentioned, the grants, one of the things that the city does is go after grants. Every time we have a project, we try to go for grant. It's, it's free money. You just got to put some work in there and show that the project that you're, that you're proposing is going to be of a benefit to the city. Some of the projects that have grants is the Douglas Bridge Project, the Coast Highway Bridge Project. And also one that I want to highlight is the Laurel Street Elementary Safe Route School Project. That project's actually out for bid right now and it's going to provide a safe routes to the school over here on the east side neighborhood. So we always try to go for grants. We've had ARBOM Grants, American Rescue Plan Act. We had Community Development Block Grants. And there's always FHWA Grants, CALOEES Grants. So we're always going after grants to try to supplement our, our funding from the city. It's part of the Thoroughfare and Signals Project. One of the projects that's there is the New Signals and Signals Modification. I don't know if you guys noticed, there was a, a new traffic signal that went up on Seagate and Coast Highway. That's, that's some of the projects that this funds. So also the traffic poles at Fousad and Oceanside Boulevard were replaced. So that's some of the projects that this account funds. Now the, the big one that we've been talking about, Measure X. This got, put into the ballot in November 18 and the Measure X funds were, or became available on April 1st of 2019. It was for a period of seven years. So fiscal year 2526 is going to be the end of, of the current term for Measure X unless like the voters decide to vote in favor of it. As I mentioned earlier, it does provide for a big part of our, our funding. I think it was about 20, 20 something million dollars. So it is a big portion of our funds that not only fund capital infrastructure projects, but also fund other, other things such as EMTs, fire training, and it helps with the, with the homeless situation that we have in the City of Oceanside. Some of the projects that Measure X is funded, or is funding are up there. Again, there's El Corazon Park Site 1. There's a lot of money being allocated for El Corazon as we're trying to go for a grant. And having shovel-ready a project and some of the money there will help our chances of obtaining the grant. We also have the pier rehab and concrete design. I want to clarify that, that pier project there, it's the concrete portion, the white portion is not the portion that unfortunately got burned down this couple of weeks. So it is for the concrete portion of the, of the pier. And there's, there's some other projects there, such as the Police Training Center and Fire and Ranch, Range. That's another project that is funded through Measure X funds. Now we have a list of unfunded CIP projects. Why do we keep a list of unfunded CIP projects? Well, as we have discussions in preparing for the budget, some of these projects are brought to us by staff, recommended by us by staff or council members. So what it allows us by having a unfunded list is to have a cost for that project, keep a record of who requested that project. And as we move forward in future years, we can start seeing which projects can fit into the budget and which ones we can do. Some of the projects that are up there, actually for current projects that are, are in design and therefore the construction portion, for example, coastal rail trail construction, it's there. We're currently in design, so that, that's why we keep a tally of unfunded projects. And here's a couple more of those projects. I will go very, very even briefly here through the water utilities part of the, of the program. Basically, those are the $80 million that we talked about out of the 192 million dollars that, that the CIP budget has. Some of those are, they're broken down into water fixed asset replacement, about 17 million. Water connection fees, about 13 million. And then sewer fixed asset replacement, about 49 million. So our sewer projects that take a lot of the money. And here's a list of some of the projects. They're funded through water sales, meter charges, and developer fees. Big project is the downtown water pipeline replacement phase two, which is about $7 million in cost. And there's a couple other projects in there. Here's a list of the projects that were completed in the previous year, about $9 million worth of projects. The current fiscal year proposes about 30 and a half million dollars. And the future, next five years, about $97 million. Again, not only Engineering Division, it looks for grants, also water utilities, the department looks for grants. We're actively looking for grants, looking for reimbursement deals, such as the one with the Municipal Water District, which we obtained about $43 million in reimbursement. But we also look for loans. Sometimes we're able to obtain really low interest loans. And that's another one of our funding source. And the proposed water and recycled projects, they line up with the strategic goal for using recycled water and for having a reliability, reliable infrastructure in the city. Now for the sewer port, which is about $49 million, these are funded through the sewer use, fixed charges, and developer fees. One of the big projects there, again, is the downtown sewer pipeline replacement, which is about $7 million, 7.8 million. That's one of the big projects. Again, a summary of the projects that were competed, completed in fiscal year 2324, about 8.3 million in that year, with the current year being, proposing about $49 million in work. And again, we're always looking for grants. It's something that we do. And I want to emphasize a lot, as the grant money is free money, it doesn't come out of the general fund. And with developer fees being lows, we're always trying to go for grants. It's something that I think city staff does a great job. And, and you can see some of the ways that water is looking for money to, to fund some of these items. And the sewer projects, they also align up with the strategic goals of having a centralized wastewater flows and replacing and rehabilitating aging infrastructure. Now with this, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2024-P10, recommending city council approval of the proposal Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 202425. And I'm available for questions.
Thanks, Chris. That's, that's a lot of projects. So I'm sure I took you all and other folks together, so thank you. There's a lot of things that were covered. If any of you have any questions about the particular project or program?
I do have a question on the recycled water program. Okay. That there is something that's near and dear to me. And it didn't seem to have a lot of priority there. I mean, recycled water can be a big savings to the city and to businesses. And wanted to know where that landed as far as your priorities.
Commissioner Anthony, thank you for your question. That is actually a, a question more directed to our Water Utilities Department. I'm with Development Services Department, but I can definitely write that question down and reach out to Mabel or Lindsay in Water Utilities and get, and get an answer for that question. I know that we had a goal to become about 40% recycle wa, using recycle, 40% of our usage should, should come from recycled water. And last I checked, I know we were, we were meeting that goal. So I know it's a high priority. Otherwise, we wouldn't be as close as, as we were last time I checked with them. But if you want, I can reach out or have Mabel reach out to you.
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks, Victor. That was very good. What I, I had just a statement or a question. I know I heard, I think it's City of San Diego. I'm not sure exactly the date, but maybe it's next year sometime. They're going to probably eliminate the idea that ADUs don't usually pay a big fee structure, right? Because it's reduced fees. I know like when I did myself an ADU, I found the structure between like, between like, I don't know, 10 or 20 to like 80 or 90. It's pretty, it's a pretty big spread when you, when you add in all the fees. Has the city thought about that as far as changing over from ADUs being, being able to get, you know, the, what do you call that? The, you know, reduced fee structure?
That's a great comment, Commissioner Balma. The reduction in fees for ADUs is derived from the state. So the state only limits the types of fees we can charge for an ADU. So until the legislature changes that or updates it, the fee structure will remain the same, which is ADUs pay very little amount with respect to impact fees. It's a very reduced amount, typically just water and sewer fees. And it's, and in those instances, it's only a partial fee.
There's drainage, there's a lot of fees.
So the, and my understanding for the purpose of keeping the fees low is to entice the production of ADUs. So if we add, so we, we've seen this phenomenon actually with another state preemption law known as SB9, where not as many folks are taking advantage of SB9 as we anticipated, only because those projects that engage in SB9, whether it's a lot, urban lot split or taking advantage of being able to put two or four units on a single family lot, it's because those, those units would pay full impact fees. So any SB9 primary unit would pay full impact fees. So we've seen a very little, or very little activity in that realm compared to ADUs. So I think part of the allure of an ADU is keeping the fees low. So folks are enticed to build them. And so far, since the legislature really overhauled the state law with respect to ADUs, it's worked because the city used to only get a handful of ADU permits each year. And now we receive well over 100 permits, applications each year for ADUs. So I think that is the reasoning and rationale behind keeping those fees low.
So even, I must have heard kind of incorrectly if San Diego was talking about changing it to, to go back to the same fee structure as the House. They can't really do that, and it sounds like it's a state mandate.
I'm not familiar, Commissioner Balma, with AD, San Diego's ADU provisions. I do know that in, in the City of San Diego, as an example, they allow much more, they have more, much more generous provisions for ADUs than what state mandates, which the state law allows them to do. So I'd have to look into that a little bit.
Maybe that's what it was. Maybe they were more generous and that's what they're going to take back.
They are. They have a much more aggressive ADU program than anywhere else in the state.
All right. Thank you. Well, I have one question. Where's Ron Ortega's park? I didn't know where Ron Ortega Park is. Where's that at?
Commissioner Balma, Ron Ortega Park is located along Brook Street and Division Street. So right where there's a bridge that goes over the 5.
Yeah.
That goes to Brooks and then goes over into Crown Heights neighborhood. So on, on the east side of, of that bridge, you have Ron Ortega Park. It's used a lot by our American Little League. Boys' Club, Boys' Girls' Club is back there. So it's in that area.
Okay. I'll have to pay more attention. I didn't know where that was. Thank you.
Any other questions for Victor?
No.
I have a question. I did read all 234 pages, believe it or not. When I say I read it, maybe I perused it. Is the, there's some fencing for the railroad in there. Is there something still to be done for the railroad, the right-of-way, as far as fencing is concerned?
Is that the fencing, Commissioner Ogden, at Bymore Street? Or which, which fencing?
I think it was just in the, one of the, I don't know specifically where it was. And I don't think it, that report indicated where it was, if you know.
I don't know it off the top of my head. I can reach back and get back to you.
Thank you. You did a lot of work on this thing. It's, I know there's a lot of repetition, but yeoman's work. Thank you very much for doing that.
One comment, like you really showed us how Measure X has been absorbed into the city's budgets now and how if it ever went away, if the voters decided they didn't want to do it again, it would be pretty much a hard thing to go back, right? From what you showed us tonight, it's pretty entrenched into everything that happens in the city. So.
Yeah, it's, it's $28 million that we got this year out of 192. If you remove the $80 million that come from enterprise fees that, that brings sewer and water, you have about $28 million out of 112, so about 25%. So it is, it is a big portion of our funding.
Yeah, it's really, it really showed me how huge it is. So hopefully when you guys get into your marketing for Measure X, you'll make sure the public sees all this.
Well, I think the public will see all those, those potholes that otherwise caused flat tires that were given fill, which is huge. And anybody has drove around other cities, the roads are horrible conditions. In Oceanside, they're still good. So that is one of the terrific things about Measure X.
One of the things that you did say is that the developer fees are going down. And then you said you expect an uptick in those 27, 28, or something like that. Why do you expect an uptick in those in that timeframe?
Commissioner Anthony, one of the reasons that the developer impact fees are going down is the high interest rates. That's one of them. Also, the, the other reason, it's, it's sometimes during election years, developers tend to hold back. They, they wait to see what's, what, what turn the economy is going to take. And once that goes, or passes on, then, then you see the development take off again. So that's what our projected, our projection is, that the impact fees will go up.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
So this is another public hearing. So there's no other questions, then if we could get a motion to agree with staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Morrissey, if I may provide one point of clarification, it is not, you're correct. It's not a public hearing. However, on any agendized item, members of the public wishing to speak on an item do have the ability to do so. So there is a line item here for public testimony of any one member of the item so wishes to speak.
If anyone in the public would like to comment on what's been presented tonight, I'd like to ask, well, first off, excuse me, do we have any, anyone speakers?
Chair Morrissey, we do not have any speakers this evening.
That doesn't include anybody speaking tonight. So if anybody in the audience would like to speak on this measure, that would be fine. I see no one stepping up. So that would, that would close the public participation. So I take it back to the planning. I don't have my staff. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to accept the capital improvement program, reply to twenty-four, twenty-five, in terms of basic motion site general plan, motion number two zero two four, P one zero, May six, two thousand and twenty-four.
Let the record show that the motion passes four oh.
So on the agenda, there's no miscellaneous actions. So I see none. So if we could go into the city planners commissioners reports. Commissioner Anthony?
Nothing to report.
We will be meeting the farmers and agriculturists and businesses in our Southmore Hills neighborhood with our council member, Rick Robertson, along with staff, to kind of introduce him and to kind of bring him up to speed as to what the plan, the Southmore Hills Community Plan is all about, in hopes that, we hope that in 2025, early in January, we can adopt it into our general plan. So we're going to start to kind of, probably Eric Joyce will be our next council member, because these these two council members have never really been in the city to learn a little bit about what that's all about. So we're going to try to get them up to speed so they'll be able to understand it better. So that's all I have to report.
What, what date is that?
Well, we're just, it's just, we're meeting with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. I have no report. City Planner?
Thank you, Chairman Morrissey. So, so last meeting, I was, at the last meeting, last time we met, I was very quick to say there's no items scheduled for the meeting on May sixth, and I was wrong. Currently, we have no items scheduled for meetings in May, the rest of the meeting, the second meeting in May, which is the twentieth, or the first two, the meeting, the two meetings in June. Doesn't mean we won't have any items. I just don't, my staff hasn't expressed to me that there will be any items coming forward over the next six weeks or so. I believe there is one item tentatively scheduled for the second meeting in June. It's a regular coastal permit for a small addition on a home on South Pacific Street. But we don't, haven't determined a date yet. So I won't say that there won't be any meeting next time until we officially cancel it. As we've learned, that's maybe not the most prudent thing to do sometimes. But nothing in the foreseeable future, with the exception of late June. Going on to city council, and it doesn't mean, let me kind of update you, doesn't mean that we're not busy working. It's just things aren't really prepared to move forward at this point to the planning commission. A lot of the projects we've been dealing with recently are located in the downtown districts, so they kind of forego coming to this body. So moving on to city council and backing up a little bit, on April twenty-four, the city council introduced an ordinance with respect to short-term rentals. That that ordinance reflected a modified staff recommendation. So a little bit from what this body did and a little bit from what we heard from the public, that got transformed into a modified staff recommendation, a little different than was considered by this body. And the council voted five oh to, actually four one to introduce that ordinance. And the second reading is at the meeting on Wednesday on May eighth. Part of that modified staff recommendation included a cap on non-hosted short-term rentals, but it's a reduced cap that was considered from the planning commission. So the the new cap of four hundred and eighty was introduced by the council and the staff modified recommendation. Part of that also included that there will be no new unhosted, no new unhosted STR permits in R one zone in the coastal, in the coastal area west of Coast Highway. And that did include an occupancy limit for homes of up to fourteen maximum residents. And that's based on a six-bedroom home. So if someone has a ten-bedroom home, they can't advertise it for more than occupancy for six bedrooms, which is fourteen guests. And so that's a very brief summary of what occurred at the council meeting on April twenty-four. And the second reading is May eighth. And after that, we have to transmit that to Coastal Commission for local coastal plan amendment, which is there's an indeterminate amount of time on how much, how long that effort might take. I covered May eighth. Nothing, nothing scheduled for May twenty-second. And in a meeting on June twenty-sixth, the council is tentatively scheduled to consider the Madera Neptune Project, which is the redevelopment of the Motel Six site, which did not come to this body, but went to DAC. It project consists, mixed-use project consisting of three hundred sixty apartments and sixty-two hotel rooms. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions that the commission may have.
Commissioner Obama?
Well, on the Motel Six, what'd you call it again, the Neptune project?
Madera Neptune.
Madera Neptune. Sounds like a sexy name. I haven't heard a lot of good things about what it looks like, though. So I, we've never, what?
I've heard a lot of good things.
Oh, you have. It looks good. Because that is the entrance to Oceanside off the freeway. So it's very important that that doesn't look like just another big, huge monolith with no, but you, but you as a planner and you as what you've seen, you think it's good for Oceanside.
I think it's a fantastic thing for Oceanside, considering what you see today.
Well, that's not saying much.
What the first, what the first impression is.
We know it's there.
But it's a very modern design, has a lot of articulation in the facade and in the roof, roof level. It varies in height. So it's a seven-story building in one component, eight-story building in another. It's highly amenitized. They are squeezing a lot in there. It's not, it's not going to say that they're not doing a lot. They're doing a lot, but the economics of that project are such that it requires that scale development to make it financially feasible. We just spoke about slowdown and, and, you know, there's no slowdown in entitlements moving forward, but there's certainly a slowdown and, and developers pulling permits to start construction on projects, a lot of them on hold for many of the reasons that Victor mentioned earlier. So this is one of the projects that the economics do work, but barely because of the hotel component. It's a very difficult site to redevelop, but they're doing it and they're committed to it. So I think it'd be a fabulous addition to the city's housing inventory. And it certainly would rejuvenate that section of South Coast Highway or North Coast Highway. So.
Thank you for that, because I was kind of getting concerned when I heard that from somebody. I'm not going to name any names. And so I thought, well, I'd ask you like what your opinion was.
Yeah, no, I've, maybe I'm a little biased because I'm enamored with the projects. I know what's there today. And I think it'll be a great benefit to the community to have that development there.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
All right.
Recording stopped.